Okay, good evening, everyone. We are getting ready to start our meeting. So at this time, I'm going to mute the public's lines if Councilwoman Ingui can unmute herself when I do so.
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for August 6, 2020, to order at 7:00 PM. On roll call, council members for solo.
Here.
Golebeck.
Here.
Ingui.
Here.
Wetchler. Council President Ballastieri.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you all to our work meeting. I hope all is well. Let's get started. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the Record and Herald News of Woodland Park, by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8, 2020. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being videotaped, and will be available on the borough website at www.elmwoodparknj.us. Ms. Delaney.
Please note that due to precautionary measures to help prevent the spread of COVID-19, we have a conference call set up for the public to call as a means of participating in tonight's meeting. For the public's information and record, the public's lines will be muted except for when we open the meeting up for the public hearing portions. We thank you in advance for your patience during the operation of tonight's meeting.
Let's open it up to the public. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Ms. Delaney, once again.
At this time, I am going to unmute the public's lines. For anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the public's records. And if all other individuals can minimize their background noise, it will be greatly appreciated.
All participants are muted. All participants are unmuted.
Would anyone from the public like to speak at this time?
Jeffrey Frytag, 35 Hillman Drive, Elmwood Park. Good evening. I have a question. Will the tennis courts at the high school property be discussed during the engineer's report?
Jeff, I missed the last half of that question. Could you please repeat it?
Regarding the tennis courts, the joint project between the Board of Education and the borough, will the tennis court construction be discussed by the engineer as part of his or her report during this evening's meeting? Because I know it says, number one, is engineer's report. But I don't see anything. I just see monthly status itself. So will the tennis courts be discussed? The project.
You want to...
He wants to know if the tennis courts will be discussed when Mr. Clemente...
Okay. I'm sure he will. But let me give you a brief update. Probably about a week ago, we met with the contractor. Once again, we flooded the court, and you can go ice skating on it. So it was deemed unsatisfactory. The engineer was there. Ali, our administrator and representative from the school, and we told the contractor that we think the product that he was using to flash-patch the areas that were suppressed was not conducive to the whole entity, and that at one, because the two separate products, later on, we're going to get huge cracking in those areas because of the way the products on their own will expand and contract differently based on the seasons. And additionally, we had said that the proper thing to do at this point, and we were all in agreement, was to reshoot the entire... Yeah, reshoot the entire area, mill those areas out where the patching took place, and go back with proper elevations to guaranteed water-free surface. And I'm sure our engineer's going to elaborate on that a little more also.
Okay. Because what I recall is, I had heard this all before, over a week ago, and what they would say, you were at the point where they said that they couldn't do anything else. And I figured they would have gotten a notice then, or they noticed you, that they weren't able to do anything, and at this point, they were... You were sort of at logger's head. And I guess in that point, then you usually get somebody else to complete the job. I don't know if that's taken place yet, because I didn't know that they were going to, as you said, reshoot the elevations of the project. And now you're saying it's going to be redone by them, by the contractor?
Just to clarify, we met three weeks ago and did the same thing, and at that point, we gave the contractor another chance to resolve the problem, which didn't occur. The last week, the final meeting there, we had the contractor there himself. Mike, do you want to pick it up for me?
Sure. Oh, it's loud. We're not satisfied with the product, so we're holding their feet to the fire until we get it to where we want it. And we're not going to back down until it's done properly. I don't know what else there is to say about it at this point.
So it's very difficult to understand, but regardless, I thought, and maybe my thoughts are incorrect, is that at that point, they no longer were going to do anything, and now I'm hearing something different. But at what point does it stop?
It's stopped. It's stopping right now.
I mean, because the project's been going on for too long. This is going to get to the library by soon.
Jeff, it's stopping right now. We had to go through that process to be fair to ourselves and to the contractor. Now, we've reached a point where it's not acceptable, fix it.
Fix it? By whom?
The contractor.
So in other words, okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? Does anyone else care to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion. Ms. Delaney?
At this time, I'm going to again mute the public's lines if Councilwoman Ingui can unmute... If Councilwoman Ingui can now unmute herself. Councilwoman Ingui?
Hi, Erin, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so for the record, Councilwoman Ingui is present via teleconference this evening. Moving on with the rest of the meeting, we first have a special recognition for strangers helping strangers. With that being said, I will turn it over to Councilwoman Pellegrine and the mayor.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. On behalf of the mayor and council, I'd just like to thank Chris so much for all you do for our community. Strangers Helping Strangers is just amazing. It's a blessing to our community. Giving out free food to those in need is so appreciated. I was a volunteer as much as, along with council people here, Doris, Sandy, Francesca, I don't know if you were there, but a lot of us were there. The chief was there. It's amazing how the community came together. Gave out free produce, free vegetables, everything. We gave out free hot meals at times. And just the fact, all the work you do to help people is just amazing to us. And I know you don't like to hear this, and I know this is not why you do it, but really, you've been a blessing to our community. The looks on, when we put those bags in the residents' cars... Like, I was going to read this, but I can't, because I have to look at you. When we put that food in the cars, people are just so appreciative. Like, they just like, "Thank you so much. What could we... Could we help in any way? Could we do anything?" And this, the community volunteers coming together. People will come on their lunch hours or breaks, even if they can help for half an hour. And Mrs. Fava, our administrative assistant, she's been coordinating with you, I know, and she's been pulling everybody together, along with the chief. And I know they've even helped Angela, yep, and they've even, Angela Fava, and they've even helped pick up food, our police department when needed to be. And it's just been amazing. And we really had to bring you here tonight to just recognize you and really thank you. We need more people in the world like you. And I, we all mean that from our hearts. We really do so. I want to thank you so much. Can you just, can you just please, before we go down, and we have something for you, can you just please tell a little bit about more what you'd like to see in the future with Elmwood Park?
Okay, so in the future...
We'll have a microphone, please?
Oh, yeah.
Way our residents could hear.
Hello. So we're currently raising funds to apply for 501(c)(3) status. This way, we can reach out to a lot of corporations and get more money that way. That being said, I'm starting, we're starting this program, which is Strangers Feeding Strangers Feeding Strangers. So it's on the website and the Facebook group. In other words, any family that's in need would sign up the Google Sheet, the Google Forums anonymously, oh, not anonymously, privately. People who want to donate would fill out the other one. And then, once a week, we'd match them up together, and that family would buy the other family dinner, but they don't know who each other is, to save, you know, pride and whatnot. So we take, we get the money, we call the place up, local businesses, have them deliver the food to residents from the family that's donating. We're also starting a youth committee, because a lot of my students and old students are getting involved and want to, you know, help. And a few people just keep asking and asking, so I'm going to form like a youth committee and have them, you know, help as well. And just, there's so much food out there. All these organizations have so much money, and it's just really tight getting new contracts with them. So right now, I don't have a contract for Elmwood Park for produce, so I just use these contacts I've made and put it together every week. So, but once we can get that contract, we can do it more regularly, maybe two, two times a week. We do dinners on Friday nights from the folks up in Glen Rock at the, I don't want to say that the name of the Sikh temple wrong, so I just won't say the name. But they're, they generously give us 200 meals every Friday with bananas, waders, and we bring to the residents of Elmwood Park. And on Sundays, they give it to us, and we drive around and we feed the homeless. Not the homeless in the shelters, the homeless that are on the, on the streets, you know? And I've been doing that for two weeks, and you get to meet the same people, you go to the same spots, and you hang out with them for a little bit, because it's just hard not to. And we were talking last time, and they were saying, "Oh, if you can get some toothbrushes or whatever." So I put the word out. So now, my car is full with toothbrushes, toothpaste, all that stuff, clothes, men and women. So after I leave here, I'm going to put it in our storage, and we're going to sort it. And on Saturdays with the meals, we're going to go and do that as well. And we do bring it to the juvenile detention center, too, for those teens as well. And we just have a lot more in the, you know, coming up, so stay tuned. Yeah, but I have to say, we help all of New Jersey, northern New Jersey, pretty much, you know, Bergen County and surrounding areas. And in Garfield, we've been doing, and Garfield, you know, the volunteers are great, amazing. When I came here to start it here, I didn't, I didn't know anybody in this town, really. Actually, the reason it starts because Sandra Columbini, I don't want to say her name wrong, she said, "Oh, I wish we had something like this in Elmwood Park on a Garfield post." So then, that's why you have it here, because she mentioned it. But the community shows up, sometimes on an hour's notice. They don't even know each other, they're meeting each other, you know, sometimes. Chief Feligno has been amazing, him and his officers, I mean, tremendous. Angela Fava, yeah, I'm not good with names, but she's my go-to. She's the glue without, I mean, she makes it easy. I need tables, I call her, boom, makes it happen, you know? The fire department, the DPW, they've all come in, played their parts, no questions asked, just whatever you need. So, I mean, thank you for that. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, Chris, my father, as a young man, said to me, "If you're going to help somebody, you help them when they need the help, not when they don't need the help." And it sounds and seems like you personify that statement. Very unselfish of you.
Thank you.
I think especially now, and that what we're experiencing out there throughout the whole nation, if we can clone you...
Well, I mean...
Well, you've done it already?
Almost, but, but seriously, though, everybody's always says things like that. And some people ask me, "How many people are in your group?" There's no answer to that. It's everybody. Because if I'm feeding the homeless on Sunday, driving around by myself, that's not just me. The meals came from somewhere, the clothes they're donating came from people, the locations I'm going to came from other people. It's everybody. So all of us, we're all in, strangers helping strangers.
Right.
So we can clone all of us.
I could see the joy you get out of it.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a paycheck. It's to see the warmth and the smiles in the people that you're feeding has got to be a tremendous feeling.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Good for you. Stay the course.
Thank you. I plan on...
We have a certificate here of appreciation.
Thank you.
And it reads, "Mr. Chris Braich..."
Mm-hmm, you said it, yeah. That's a 50/50, get it right, you know?
Now, watch me blow, "Strangers Help Strangers. In recognition of your important contribution to the residents of the borough of Elmwood Park, we want to thank you for helping us help those in need."
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
No, thank you.
How about whatever you want, yeah.
Yeah, I'll...
Yeah. Come on, Councilwoman. Down. Gee.
Okay. Let me set it up here in the middle, not this way.
Turn around.
You're going to be that lucky. You see all the holes?
Are you ready? Okay. Thank you. Bye, everybody. Thank you. Bye. Okay. Thank you. I have a question. You provide me...
Oh. You're going to be that lucky. You're going to be that lucky. You see all the holes?
Are you ready? Okay. Thank you. Bye. Bye, everybody. Thank you. Bye. I have my name. I had one to shout out. I know.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your patience during that special recognition. Moving on, first on the agenda, we have our engineer's report. Before I turn the mic over to John Clemente from Alamo Group, I do have an Item 1A, which is the proposal for design services, the Marina Park improvements. This may seem familiar. It was on the agenda, I want to say, back in January, but it was held off because we weren't moving forward with the project right away. But now being that we've received the Green Acres funding, we also applied for additional funding, it is now back in front of you this evening, so...
I'd like to comment. John, just tell the powers-to-be back at the ranch that I think the fee is a little high. Around 17% is, is being very generous. We're at about 21% now, so see what you can do to trim that down would be appreciated.
Yes, sir.
I made that note, mayor. And with that being said, we can move on to 1B, which is our monthly status report. And I see John has his microphone in front of him, so it's all yours, John.
Okay, thank you.
John, if you can get up on it, on the mic, because we, the people...
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, otherwise, yeah, they'll let us know if they can't hear you.
Okay. Is that good?
Yes.
If you could even get a little closer.
A little closer, all right. Hmm.
Don't start singing, John.
Okay. Good evening, folks. Item 1 is the head wall at the intersection of Lynnwood Avenue and River Drive. That's in limbo because of the coronavirus strike, whatever you want to call that. We haven't got any response. I sent a memo to them yesterday, asking for an update, and did not get any response. So that's where it is. Second item, the traffic signal warrant at River Road and River Drive. A survey that we have found in our files will be used for the county's use in preparing the traffic signal for that intersection.
What's the, what's the holdup there, John? It's been going on forever.
Well, it's, the primary designers on this is Bergen County Department of Engineering.
Okay.
So they're, I don't know if their offices are open, or how, what kind of staff they have at this point.
Okay.
But we'll check on it. Number 3, the Rosebonne Park improvements. The project has commenced with regard to the basketball half-court construction and relocation. The playground portion will be coordinated with the contractor for installation. Item 4, the sewage force main over the Passaic River has been gratefully taken over by our Honorable Salvatore Graffia, taking the lead on this. Alamo has agreed to provide any assistance required in that regard.
How are we moving on that, Sal?
Well, I drafted the ordinance...
Sal, please, in the mic, please, I'm, I'm, I don't mean to be rude.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for reminding me, mayor. I redrafted the ordinance. I sent it out for review, for Alamo to review the ordinance itself, that they were suggesting if there's any changes to be made and so forth. It is a, in compliance with the state requires, rather than me going through...
Sal, you're talking about the market street...
Oh, the bridge, I'm sorry. Ooh, I thought you were talking about the other thing. I'm sorry. All right, with the, with the bridge, I have been in contact with the Public Service Department to see if they have any issues with the bridge itself. They were not aware that they had any lines there, but I walked the bridge, and I went and took pictures. They have a gas line, and they also have electric lines going through the bridge, just like we have our sewer and water lines. We are, he's going to look into it. I'm, I'm in, trying to get in touch with the county to see what is going on with the project. Now, I've done some research. There is nothing in the state of New Jersey with regards to this kind of issue, as to what our standing would be with regards to the bridge, okay? And the replacement of the lines. However, there, I've done some research out of state, nationwide. There's been two cases which have dealt with this, both in contradiction with each other. Courts have found one way, courts have found the other way. So we're in a good position. I think under the circumstances, if we approach the issue fairly early, before they start doing anything of designs, together with public service, we can join together and see what we can come up with to make them understand that we are the town's best interest and the taxpayers, is to have them pick up and replace the pipeline. Otherwise, the only alternative would be to go underneath the river, which would be cost prohibitive. It just won't happen. It just couldn't happen. Okay? So this is where we're at right now, so...
Thank you, thank you, Sal.
We're trying to take care of that end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Engineer?
Okay, back to item 5, the tennis courts, which we were just speaking about. As was told...
Into the mics, Sal, please. I'm sorry, John.
A flood test was done on the courts, and it was found that there were ponding issues there. Evidently, the contractor eyeballed his repairs and did not use a survey. So at this juncture, we advised him to mill the surface, the entire surface, and survey the top, so that he knows exactly where the depressions are, so they could be filled in properly and paved once and for all in a, in a good position, so we can put the coatings on. So that's where we stand.
Okay.
He's, he's planning that survey and milling work now. Item 6, the Bergen County Division of Community Development Project has been completed.
Sal, I'm sorry. John, did you say he is preparing to, to survey and mill?
Yes.
So he's in agreement, then?
He didn't say specifically in writing, but...
He verbally...
That's what we're after him to do.
Okay.
If he doesn't do it that way, it's not going to get done right.
Correct.
So we're going to hold him to it.
Sorry, once again, for interrupting.
It's all right. Item 7, the Route 4, Mola Boulevard and Elizabeth Avenue, traffic signal poles. The NJDOT has not published a bid date to this date, to date. Improvements to Mola Boulevard, Phase 3. A pre-construction meeting is being scheduled for next week to discuss the potential interferences now with PSENG. They're still working on Mola Boulevard. We didn't get a reading on how far they've gotten, so...
We talked to them today, John. They're, they're telling me the laterals won't be connected probably till October, so...
We may want to delay the paving work.
Yeah, we have.
And we're going to ask our contractor...
Because they started doing markouts, and we told them, "Standby, we got to wait till PS is done." So my traffic division's on it.
Okay. So the contractor will have to agree to a postponement and delay of the project. So that's, we're going to meet and discuss that issue next Wednesday.
Well, he really has no choice, am I right? Because we don't want him paving the road if this...
No, we don't, we don't want to pave the road while they have work to do. They're just going to upset the apple cart there.
Okay.
Item 9, documents for improvements to Mola Boulevard, including the streetscape type of improvement, including lighting, beautification, have been sent to the DOT for approval. Item 10, the Slaughterdam Road Sewage Pumping Station is in the hands of Scott Cards of the DPW, and we have no movement on that. Cherry Hill ADA Playground Parking Lot has commenced, and...
It was completed.
Oh, completed, I'm sorry. It's being, it's being completed. Yesterday?
Had a look.
Yesterday.
Had a look, Mike.
I didn't go see it yet.
Okay.
Maybe next, beginning of next week.
Okay.
River Drive Dog Park has been halted due to the Garden State Parkway widening project. Veterans Memorial Park at Van Riper and the Boulevard, Ali has been preparing models of this park, and he will submit those to the borough when they're done.
When do you expect...
I presume next week.
Next week?
I will confirm with Ali, but I think it's been next week. Should be okay.
Okay. Put a little fire under his backside on that.
Yeah. The 219 Road Program, D and L paving, has substantially completed this project, and we're waiting for punch list items to be resolved. Drainage issues have also been resolved. The Tuella Avenue Water Main Project started last week, and we estimate the progress to date to be about 40% completed. The Municipal Marina Park improvements...
John, on that Tuella Ave, we're experiencing problems there with the excavation?
Excuse me?
The change orders being processed for approval?
Yes.
What did we run into there?
I think they had issues with the soil, the quantity of the soil.
Okay.
There may have been some soil that is, has to be removed by special means and brought to a special...
So the soil, at the desired elevation, the soil... So, the soil, at the desired elevation, the soil below that was not substantial enough to hold the pipes, so they're going down to where they feel the soil is suitable and then come back up with the controlled, a controlled...
We don't have an idea of where the bed and good soil begin and end, so it's a, it would be a trial and error issue. Might, might be more expensive to do that and to just dig out where we're supposed to put the water main and deal with the soil that we uncover in that regard and not go any deeper.
So, so what's...
Water main is usually about four feet deep.
Okay.
So...
He says the soil conditions were tested and determined additional costs will be associated with soil removal.
Yes.
Meaning that the soil they take out is not suitable to go back in?
Correct.
And you'll come back with controlled substance?
You'll come back, that's correct.
Okay. And that's not a drug, by the way, chief. It's a term used in, in soil also, so. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Item seventeen, the 2019 CDBG Project Improvements to Donner and Echo, Baleshu. Bids are due on August 11th with an expected award for August 13th. The 219 NJDOT Municipal Aid Grant for Mola Boulevard, Phase Two. Plans are being prepared for improvements to Mola from Market Street to Linden Avenue. Number nineteen, the 2020 New Jersey DOT Municipal Aid Grant for Gilbert Avenue. There again, the plans are out to bid and bids are due on August 11th with an award scheduled for August 13th. Twenty, borough-wide drainage improvements. Previously identified streets are being investigated to resolve flooding and ponding conditions. Additional locations have been identified. Construction cost estimate of the existing known drainage problems has been submitted and additional drainage locations have been examined. Twenty-one, the New Jersey DEP SPPP and SWP updates. Alamo is providing assistance to the Borough in preparing updates to Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan and the Stormwater Management Plan at no cost to the town.
Good to hear that, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item twenty-two, Borough Police Station Edition. We're preparing a scope of work to make improvements to a floor space at the bank to accommodate the Borough Police's offices. Existing plans have been submitted to the Police Department for layout changes. We have not got anything back yet and...
We started talking to the property owners there at 100 Broadway and they are still interested, so I'm waiting to hear back from them. They are kind of consult with, in Sarah, the Shoprite owners, to get some buy-in from them to contribute towards the project. So, I'm waiting to hear back from them.
Okay, back to item twenty-one for a moment. Salvatore Graffia has reminded me that he has prepared an ordinance for the stormwater management and he's asked us to review it for him and we will do that and have some answer by, I think, the November meeting. It's quite extensive and very comprehensive.
Yeah. John, just for the edification of the council, just to explain exactly what this, this is all about.
The ordinance?
The process, the stormwater pollution.
Okay, new, you want, okay, I think I turn it over to...
All right, Mayor, with regards to the ordinance, that's what I was talking about earlier. I made a mistake with discussing this part rather than the other part. This again is on a periodic times, the state requires that every, every municipality redo and re-review their stormwater drain ordinances and, which encompasses part of what Alamo Group is going to be also doing with regards to it. And every year, you have to comply with what their updates are in requiring storm drainage and requirements that the state has and you have to comply with them. I have reviewed the ordinance that we have. In review, I noted that there were so many changes to it to comply with what the state requires now, there would make no sense to start doing it line by line, item by line, word by word, changes. So, what I did is I just revoked the old ordinance, redrafted a whole new one, which now is in compliance and we have to have that by the end of the year, effective 2021.
So, how, how much improvement do we have ahead of us?
The improve, as to the ordinance itself, there are certain regulations and requirements. That's why I turned the ordinance over to the engineering, Mr. Alamo Group, to, for them to review the ordinance as it is now drafted by me, whether they have any recommendations, suggestions, because it talks about a volume, density, collection, and that's all.
Yeah. So, so, John, I guess my, my question is, are we far away from that and is this going to be an expensive proposition for us?
No.
That's good.
It would, it would be imposed on the developers more than any...
Yeah. On the developers?
On developers, yes.
So, okay, so what you're saying to me, up, up to this year, we're in pretty good shape?
We're fine.
We're fine, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we have to comply with by next year. So, what happens is, in most of these situations, any development, any, any changes to drainage, it'll be the developer's responsibility, not the Borough's.
Thank you.
So, that gives us more teeth.
Thank you.
Now, we had a chance to briefly look at it. It's very comprehensive and it's, it's very detailed and I said to Sal, we might be able to condense it somewhat and make it more intelligible to an average person reading this thing, because it's very complicated. So, we'll have a chance to do that by, I think, the November meeting and she'll have some answers by that time.
Sounds good.
The last item on the list is the PSENG Coordination of Gas Main Replacements in the Borough. So, they made a list of streets where they expect to do improvements based on their gas installation, whether they pave half the street or repave half the street or the entire street curb to curb, depending upon the amount of intrusion that they made on the roadway. I looked at the list and agreed with most of their suggestions and we made other suggestions which they, which they agreed to. Presently, like this...
You know, you know what bothers me? I think we're all in agreement that a seam running down the center of a street is wrong. However, I guess at the, at the governor's level, they've concluded that they're liable to pave the area that they disturbed to the center point of the road.
Correct.
But that doesn't take into consideration, you're creating this weak seam on a road and also the aesthetics of it. So, actually, I don't know why we are not, especially, maybe this is something we have to get together with other towns and insist in that if you're going to pave half a road, you have to pave the whole road for aesthetic and, you agree?
I agree. And another point to take into account is the, the service connections that go across the other side of the street, which they're, the gas, they have the laterals, which the, the gas main, of course, is in one lane on one side and you've got your service connections going the whole length of the road.
Of course. But those, from what I understand, they're going to tunnel, go, that, that process or they're going to actually have to cut that other half of the side of the road?
It depends on the condition of the services. You know, if the services are good, then they can reconnect them right at the main. If there's a question of the condition of the service pipe itself to the house, they have to dig it up and replace it all the way to the, to the sidewalk.
They're not capable of sleeving it?
I, I'm not sure about that. I don't, they'd have to dig up somewhere at the other end to, to bring a sleeve to its, you know, to its ending.
As soon as they, as soon as they do that, then they owe us the whole road.
Yes, yes.
So...
I would, I would like to take a, a ion inspection of those streets and see how much they have disturbed the other side where the main is, you know, opposite to the main, to see how much service connections they made across. And if there are enough of those, I think we can impose on them to do the entire street.
Right.
The other suggestion I would make too is that, let me get this out of the way, is that we take, undertake the paving of the streets after they're done and they give us a credit of somehow to do some other work. Or they pay us to pave the street entirely from curb to curb instead of doing this piecemeal like a half, half, like the street, you say, and leave a seam in the middle.
Well, the trick is to get them to pay for the whole street, which I think is...
We're going to talk, we're going to talk to them next Wednesday. We'll see what we can get out of them.
You could tell them the mayor's going to take this to the governor's office. He's going to have 20 more mayors with him.
Okay. That'll be a hard nut to swallow. And that ends the engineer's report. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Mr. Laney.
Okay, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, for those that joined us during our July work session, we were supposed to have a presentation from our Borough Planner. Unfortunately, some other circumstances had arisen, so Mr. Chris Colley from Topology is here with us this evening and we will just give him a moment to get set up for his presentation.
Good.
It's up to you, whatever you feel more comfortable with. The HDMI is...
If I plug it up there, I'm going to have to stand up there.
All right, they shoot you at the wall.
What, what TV are you going on?
He's going to shoot you at the wall.
If I plug it up there, I'm going to have to stand up there.
I got it.
You want the wall or I have a screen.
Just as soon as they want it.
Go do that.
Chairs together?
Sal, I think you're the one who's so tall about to get this out.
What about me up here? Where are you going to be standing?
Aaron played musical chairs tonight.
Okay, again, we apologize for the break.
Testing.
Mike, bring the popcorn.
Yeah, it's not that exciting tonight.
vending machine in the hall.
You get stuff out of there and money.
Next person gets two bags of burgers.
The table closer?
Yeah.
Need it closer? You need it closer?
I need to bring this closer so it gets smaller on the screen.
Okay, so...
So, I just looked down on Boswell because in the beginning, a few months ago, I said, I don't know, excuse my language, I need this half assed, I have four minutes to live there. I swore up and then I took a video and I said that I, I think I was playing a Tetris game with all of them. So, you know, so now apparently you've fixed it and they're going back and redoing it. I don't know.
Right. Sorry for...
So upset.
All right.
Maybe it got unplugged? Yeah, cause tell me.
That sounds right. Yeah, pretty good. Pretty good. Yeah, I'll project. Yeah, okay. Okay, so, thank you. As Aaron said, my name is Chris Colley. I'm with Topology. We are the planners for the Borough. I was supposed to be here last month to, to speak about this, but it's tough out there on those New Jersey roads, so I appreciate you accommodating me tonight. I'm going to talk for like 10 minutes and I know you've got a full agenda, so I'll be, I'll be relatively brief and I think many of the council members have seen this before. But generally, what I'm here to do tonight is to talk to you about a redevelopment plan for the Market Street area. It's an extension off a lot of the work that we've, we've done before and that we've presented to you previously. We worked on it, we got a lot of input from, from folks and excited to see it move forward. So, I'll give a little bit of background, walk you through sort of what is a redevelopment plan, why are we doing this, what's in the redevelopment plan and should you choose to move forward, what will be the, the next steps from here. So, as I mentioned, this is really an extension of work that we did previously, sort of next step to work that the Borough hired us to do beginning in 2018 and then through 2019 to look at Broadway and Market Street as priority corridors that you were interested in improving. We completed what we call the revest project almost a year ago at this point, where we looked at both those corridors and really like the recommendations that came out of that fed directly into the work that we're, we're sharing with you tonight and the work that we'll be doing hopefully in the future. So, one of our recommendations on Market Street was to do a redevelopment plan. We found certain conditions on Market Street that we thought were conducive to doing a redevelopment plan. Parcel dimensions, they're very narrow, very shallow, parking is an issue on Market Street and the existing zoning is challenging for, for encouraging redevelopment. What I should have said previously is that really the purpose of that revest project was how can we get people to invest in Market Street? How can we create Market Street into a sort of walkable downtown area where people are going to want to build, people are going to want to hang out, people are going to want to shop, spend money. So, as a first step to that, what we did in 2019 was we did an area needed rehabilitation designation, which I think almost all these members of council were, were around for. And what that did is it allowed us, allowed us as the Borough to enact redevelopment plans. So, just a word on what, what is a redevelopment plan? Basically, a redevelopment plan is like custom zoning for an area. It allows us to like be very specific in terms of describing the things that we'd like to see, what we wouldn't like to see, and allows us to be very specific about the types of public improvements that will be in an area. So, we put design standards in there and we put new zoning in. Importantly, and like this is a key point, so I'm going to emphasize it a little bit, there are two types of redevelopment plans. One is superseding, which basically means whatever the zoning was, we're going to throw it out and replace it. And one of them is an overlay, which means we're going to keep the original zoning, we're going to put new zoning on top of it. So, whatever was there before remains in place. This is an overlay zone. So, the existing zoning on Market Street stays, but we've added on top of it this extra layer of zoning intended to, again, attract investment. So, the document is like quite... So, generally, like the uses throughout the whole area are pretty consistent. We're talking about mixed-use buildings, ground floor residential, upper store commercial. Talking about restaurants, we're talking about apartments, we're talking about offices. In the gateway zone, a range of three to four stories, there's a sort of density bonus that we've written into there to incentivize people to assemble parcels. I'll talk a little bit more than in a minute. But three to four stories is the maximum that you can build, and then a residential density, if someone were to build a residential project, of 35 units to 50 units per acre, depending on if you use this bonus zoning that we've laid out. So, just like to make that real a little bit, the Chase Bank site, 20 units roughly without a bonus, 28 units with a bonus. And then to talk about the corridor a little bit, as I said, these ones are a little smaller, so corridor, two to three stories versus three to four, similar uses, smaller properties, and smaller residential densities. So, just to give you a sense as to the, like what I mean by this bonus zoning structure, if someone were to develop what you see here in dark purple, which is just the Chase Bank site, and I should say, these are just examples, as I said, it's an overlay zone, so no permitted uses change or deleted, and similarly, like this is all voluntary. This is an opportunity for property owners to participate. So, if someone were just to develop the Chase Bank, they could develop a three-story building, but if they were to develop the Chase Bank Plus, some adjacent parcels up to around, I think 40,000 square feet is the number, they could go up to four stories. And similarly, down here on Market and Church, if you were to develop just these two properties, you could build a two-story building, but if you were to develop those properties, press the properties in the rear, you could develop up to a three-story building. And then again, this is like really all put in there as a way to incentivize people to acquire multiple properties, to create a bigger development site, and really to try and get us like that critical mass that we think is important for accomplishing the borough's goals along Market Street. So, some common provisions, I'm not gonna walk through these in detail, but I think they're worth noting. You know, we require active ground floor uses throughout, like in common terms, like that means like we want like shop fronts, places where like we walk by and it's like not a dead zone, active area. We have architectural design standards in there, some precedent images of other buildings, sort of descriptive but not restrictive, is the intention. Site design standards for landscaping and bufferings and all of those things that are important. Certain projects, traffic's always a concern in all the communities we work in, depending on the scale of the project, certain projects have a traffic impact study requirement, which is important. We limit the vehicular access points, like one thing we see on Market Street right now is there's a lot of curb cuts, right? A lot of opportunities to go in and out. We've put plans in there to limit that. Mechanisms for Borough Park improvements, streetscape improvements, affordable housing obligation that complies with your state obligation. And then lastly, parking. We have, I think, fairly creative approach to parking in there in that we write up a sort of onsite shared parking standards, which is the idea that like, you know, not all uses have the same needs at the same times, so depending on the need, if, let's say it's a mixed-use building, you provide a sort of shared parking between the different uses. And then off-site shared parking, which I'll spend a moment talking about because, you know, it's sort of a novel, novel thing for communities when they deal with it for the first time. We've written in there basically that if someone is able to enter into a long-term agreement with a property owner within 500 feet of their property, I think we put 20 years minimum or a perpetual deed that they could count the parking off-site that they have an agreement for towards their onsite parking. And like that's a way of sort of enabling development, even if a parcel can't accommodate all of its parking needs onsite. So, lastly, a couple streetscape improvements, images like showing the types of things we've written in there. You know, we have very specific requirements about landscaping along the street, about pedestrian zones in the middle of the sidewalk, and then opportunities for outdoor dining, outdoor seating, things of that nature along Market Street. So, I know it was sort of a quick overview, but generally, like, you know, it's a work session tonight, so you're obviously not taking any formal action, but any comments that you have on the document, I'm happy to like talk about, right? And make modifications as needed. And then, should you choose to move forward, it's a three-step process for these ordinances. So, the first step would be to introduce an ordinance. Second step would be it has to go to the master, to the planning board, who needs to determine that it's consistent with the master plan. So, like your master plan has pages of recommendations about making design improvements to Market Street. This is consistent with that. If we had come in here with a redevelopment plan that was basically saying, we wanna rezone all Market Street as an industrial property, that would be inconsistent with the planning, with the master plan, and the planning board would have something to say about that. So, assuming we got through those first two steps, then like any ordinance is a public hearing, second reading, and potential adoption, which could be as soon as September 3rd. So, before I stop talking, and I appreciate you humoring me, on an unrelated but somewhat related note, we are also working on a master plan reexamination. There is a survey on your website for people to give input. We already have like 225, 250 responses, which is great, very cool, like impressive. So, if any folks are listening at home, go on the website, take the master plan survey, and we'll probably be back at some point relatively soon to talk about that. So, that's my spiel, and I hope it was clear. And questions, comments, and whatever folks would like to talk about. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Chris? No?
I would just say, I think we've come a long way, and I'm happy, and it's been a long week, and I think we should.
So, just for timeline sake, it could be introduced? Sorry. Just for timeline sake, it could be introduced next week, but I believe the planning board already met for the month of August. So, it would have to be their September meeting and probably our October meeting unless we have a special meeting after the planning board's review.
Yeah, and I'd like to say that to the public, that this isn't just a one-night plan here. This has been going on for a while. We've had numerous meetings with Chris and fine-tuning this to this point, seeing, trying to make it fit Fairwood Park, and there's been a lot of work done up to this point, so. Council, any questions that kind of like got the picture? You know, it's, like you said, an overlay zone, which means everything that's here now can stay, and we're adding this on top of it, which makes it broader. Naturally, the objective is to induce people to come in, and based on these sections that were color illustrated, their size was predicated on what we thought would be necessary for a developer to come in and make it manageable. And to his point, profitable, to our point, we're getting the aesthetics and businesses that we so desire.
Mayor, if I may...
Yes, please.
Just so that you're also aware of the fact that with this concept, you also have to consider potentially your, the ordinances that you have. With regards, I've done some research, and the ordinance that exists right now does not cover a redevelopment board or agency in town. So, there's a thought here that two things can be done. Either that the council can act as the board, a redevelopment board, and there has to be some sort of ordinances set up to allow you to do this, and/or to set up a redevelopment board, which would take on the responsibility of overseeing this whole redevelopment aspect. So, the choice is up to the council. But either way, there has to be an ordinance drafted to allow a redevelopment aspect.
It's something we should do now, Sal? That should happen now?
Yeah.
The council, you care to speak on that? Daniel, your opinion?
Well, I don't think that...
You gotta get in the mic, I'm sorry.
That won't be necessary unless we actually do a project through a redevelopment, right? Designation. Within the confines of this on itself, right, they would just be planning board, zoning board approvals based on whatever, as long as it fits the dimensions, right?
You will have to enter, you'll have to enter into redevelopment agreements to build these projects.
So, to answer that, I would make it the council.
Well, this is the thing. What I'm trying to say is the option is the council's option to either create a board or not to create a board, and the council can act as a board, because there are certain aspects about it with redevelopment that it's out of the hands of the zoning board, it's out of the hands of the planning board. Okay? And as certain aspects of it where you have developers' agreements and all sorts of things that it's more to the tune of the council's purview than anybody else.
I was gonna say, I agree. I think the council should act as the board.
Good. So, then what I'll do is I'll draft a ordinance to be adopted to allow the council to act as...
Yeah, just let me pull this aside. Are we all agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so then the council's gonna act as the board? That's what we're agreeing, correct? Okay.
Good.
Thanks, and Chris is gonna hang around for the second public hearing in case people have questions specific to this. Excellent. Great. You'll be here till 2:00 in the morning, Chris.
Do you just wanna open it up now? Do you just wanna open it up to the public if they have questions on this topic and this topic only?
Yes, let's do that. Motion to open to the public at this stage?
So moved.
All in favor? Mr. Laney?
All participants are muted. All participants are unmuted.
Okay, so those that were listening in from the audience, we just had a presentation from our borough planner, Topology, and at this time, we understand that you may have some questions, so for the sake of your time and the time of our borough planner, we have a public hearing for the presentation and the presentation only. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
Jeffrey Pride Tech, 35 Hillman Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes.
But you're doing a lot better off than I am, because we cannot hear any, I cannot hear anything. I can only speak for myself. I heard Mr. Colley, is he at the location there?
Correct.
Okay. Very difficult to understand. I heard the attorney, okay, regarding something about setting up some sort of board outside the planning board and so, it really, it's useless. You're talking about a public hearing, first of all, it wasn't even on the agenda, and secondly, you really can't understand anything. I'll comment on that. You can't understand anything.
The public hearing is just as a courtesy?
Courtesy for what? What is that?
Jeff, we're trying to make do with the best we can here. It's not our choosing.
You can't hear anything.
I understand you're saying that. I understand you're saying that.
You can, yeah, you laugh, you think it's funny. I heard your two callers last night when we were talking about a work meeting, and you said, "Well, we oughta hurt people, you shouldn't allow them to talk." Well, I know your answer. That's your entire...
Jeff, stick to the topic here. You're going off in a different direction. Anyone else here to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion. Motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
All participants are muted.
We saved you three hours, Chris.
Council, just so you know, you can hear perfectly.
I was just, thank you, Councilwoman Ingui. And the public hearing for the presentation was only opened as a courtesy so that the public did not need to wait until the end of the evening, and so that the planner did not need to wait until the end. There is no formal action being taken, so again, it was just a courtesy. Moving forward, under correspondence this evening, we have the River Drive resident letter in regards to a sidewalk extension. After the packets were sent out, our traffic division provided an opinion of which I'll hand out now, and our VA in chief can review.
Mayor, may I? Sure. So, we received a letter from a resident, a couple of, I believe, a couple of other residents in the area also got on board with it, requesting a sidewalk be added on River Drive in the area of Willow Street from the Fairlawn border south towards Columbia. Had the traffic division conduct a study, a survey of the area, and basically, in a nutshell, what they're saying is that this could be very costly. First and foremost, it's a county road, so we would have to get authorization to do anything there from Bergen County. It's approximately 185 feet of sidewalk. There is a utility pole with a transformer affixed to it that would have to be relocated in order for this to occur. There would be the addition of some crosswalks, which would entail handicap ramps, accessible ramps to be installed, and some tree removals. So, at face value, it seems pretty involved and expensive, and I'm not convinced that there's a dire need for this at this point. There's never been sidewalks there. In the future, if there is paving done of this area by the county, we can consult them on this topic and bring it to their table and see if they would be interested in considering it. But based upon this report, I don't see it being a viable option at this point for the borough, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Does the council care to comment on that? Moving along.
Okay, moving on to our resolutions for this evening. The first being 3A, which is the renewal of our used car dealerships. So, on a yearly basis at this time, through Marlene and the clerk...
Mayor, may I?
Sure. So we received a letter from a resident, a couple of, I believe, a couple of other residents in the area also got on board with it requesting a sidewalk be added on River Drive in the area of Willow Street from the Fairlawn border south towards Columbia. I had the traffic division conduct a study, a survey of the area. And basically, in a nutshell, what they're saying is that this could be very costly. First and foremost, it's a county road, so we would have to get authorization to do anything there from Bergen County. It's approximately 185 feet of sidewalk. There is a utility pole with a transformer affixed to it that would have to be relocated in order for this to occur. There would be the addition of some crosswalks which would entail handicap ramps, accessible ramps to be installed, and some tree removals. So at face value, it seems pretty involved and expensive. And I'm not convinced that there's a dire need for this at this point. There's never been sidewalks there. In the future, if there is paving done of this area by the county, we can consult them on this topic and bring it to their table and see if they would be interested in considering it. But based upon this report, I don't see it being a viable option at this point for the borough, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Does the council care to comment on that? Moving along.
Okay, moving on to our resolutions for this evening. The first being 3A, which is the renewal of our used car dealerships. So on a yearly basis at this time, through Marlene and the clerk's office, our used car dealerships make their applications for their renewals. In front of you are just two of the many that will come in front of us. So as we receive them, we will put them on the agenda. It is, again, done annually. So if there are no questions, we'll move forward with doing those. Okay, 3B is an onsite inspection agency contract which was done in 2017 and expired at the end of May 2020. I just so happened to come across it in speaking with the chief/BA. It's something that is definitely beneficial for us to seek again and obtain again to inspect any of our elevators, escalators, and so on. So I'll turn it over to the BA if he wants to add anything.
Sure. I spoke to our construction official about this. He's happy with this company that we utilize for this. If we didn't utilize them, we would have to use the state and the borough would have to forego the permit fees and the state would be able to collect them. So I think we should move forward and retain this company.
Council, your opinion?
I agree.
All seem to agree?
Yes.
Moving on.
Okay, 3C is a standard recommendation for a release of performance bond which was recommended by Boswell Engineering.
Any questions on that, Council?
Okay.
Mr. Delaney?
3D is a request to purchase equipment for sewer repairs by our DPW superintendent. There is available funding in the sewer bond that was passed a few months back. And in front of you, he provided the quotes. And again, it's necessary equipment for our sewer repairs.
Mike, this is in the budget or is this capital? Sewer repairs D?
It was, there was a bond previously for issues like this. So it's already been accounted for in that bond.
In that bond, okay.
Okay, 3E are two requests to refund overpayments by our tax department. 3F is done also on a yearly basis. It is the renewal for the school year, the shared service agreement with the Board of Education and the borough for the school security officers. It's again, something we do every year at this time, so it would be for the 2020, 2021 school year. And we will be sure to include in the Board of Education contract the matching $1.50 of which the borough did last year for the salary of the officers.
Mike, would you like to elaborate a little on that?
Yes, Mayor. This is a shared service agreement that we've been doing for the past several years. It allows us to provide the school system with onsite armed security officers. We're all retired police officers. The salaries are split evenly down the middle by the Board of Education and the borough. This has been working out fantastically for everyone involved. The kids love it, the faculty loves it, and it's a great thing. It takes a little burden off the police department and our schools are fortified with these officers.
I think that the police presence is so important at a school for many reasons. And we all know where we can go with those reasons. And it's a great collaboration with the school. Anybody else here to speak on that?
Yes.
Yeah, sure, please. In the microphone, please. Excuse me for being rude, but...
I'm sorry.
Get into it, though. Go right up to it.
My mouth? No. As I was going to say, that the parents too are very happy and they thank the police department and the Board of Education for the security in the school. They feel safe sending their children there because knowing that everybody is secure with them, everybody. You know, the parents are very happy with it. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
Okay, 3G is... Yes?
Of course. Security officers. Besides the safety for the students and the staff, those security officers that are provided to us have become friends with so many of those students. They are a huge asset to our school in so much more ways than just the safety portion of it. So I thank our council and obviously the Board of Ed for providing those for us. And anything that we give them is so well deserved because they go above and beyond constantly.
Thank you, Denise. We almost forgot about you. Speak up once in a while.
Forget about me, Mayor.
Okay, 3G is also for the 2020, 2021 school year in regards to the crossing guards, which is again, through the police department, something done on an annual basis. In front of you in your packets was just a sample from last year, so it would be adjusted with the names for this year. And, you know, the BA and the school district will be working together because we all know that the school year will look a little differently with days in and not in.
That's going to be some scheduling.
Okay, 3H are, I believe, three requests for vacation buybacks from our employees.
And that's a typical...
Yep.
And the benefits there are we're paying them with today's dollars, not next year's or 10 years' dollars, which would inflate the situation.
Okay, 3I is a request from the building department, a request for reimbursement. An individual paid $100 for a CO for a property that they are no longer seeking to buy. So they're requesting reimbursement for that $100 for the CO fee. Okay, 3J is the relocation of a bus stop on Mola Boulevard. This was sent over from the county. So as you can see, they provided pictures, a sample resolution so that the mayor and council can approve the new location of the bus stop.
I just have a quick question on that. They will, there will be, you know...
Bus shelter?
Bus shelter.
Mike, elaborate, please.
Not just, not just a stop.
So let me, let me start by giving kudos to Councilwoman Pellegrine. She persisted with this, not that she had to, but she did. I told her it would take some time to do. With the road widening project that was undertaken by the county of Mola and Market, the bus shelter on the western, southwestern corner of Market and Mola was removed. We lost a good portion of sidewalk there and there is no physical possible way to put that shelter back there. We just don't have the room. So I had my traffic division contact New Jersey Transit and insist that they put a new shelter somewhere in close proximity to that area so that those people who were there taking that bus have a shelter to rely upon. So this is the end of that ordeal.
I want to thank you for persisting also because it's so important. When you ride by and it's so hot or so cold in the winter and the snow, the rain, and you see people standing there with no shelter, it's just horrifying. It really is. It breaks my heart. So I'm so glad that we all stuck to our guns and persisted on this. And now our residents and whoever else needs to take the bus will be covered and it'll be a little better for them. So thank you.
Mr. Delaney? Okay.
Okay, moving on to K, Bergen County Shared Services. So the county recognizes that many municipalities have been experiencing challenges due to COVID-19. So in an effort to help alleviate some of the financial burden, they have agreed to renew all shared services that end at the end of 2020, so December 31, 2020, at the same rate and billing cycles as the previous year. So what that means for us is we have a shared service for our health department. So the county is so graciously offering us the same services at the same rate of 2020 rather than increasing. So we have to pass resolutions for that as well.
Very nice. Okay.
3L is a customary retirement compensation from one of our officers, which is a part of their contract.
Mr. Fugno, would you like to...
Yes, standard operating procedure, Mayor. Contractual obligation. The officer put his time in, he's retiring, and he's recouping his vacation and sick time. That is standard procedure. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Delaney?
And then last for our resolutions is M, Fire Department standby compensation. I will turn that over to our VA and police chief.
Yeah, so we had two protests, as everyone is aware. I had the fire department err on the side of absolute extreme caution, stand by in their houses in the event that we needed them for, put something out or whatever we may need them for. And this is their compensation for that.
Good heads up on that, Mike.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our resolutions for next week. Moving on to ordinances, at our July meeting, we had discussed the prohibited noises ordinance that Councilman Goleback had brought to the table. Our borough attorney, based on our feedback, drafted this ordinance. But again, we kind of left Sunday aside, so I don't know if you want to readdress that at this point, but he has drafted this for introduction for next week.
Absolutely.
So as you're aware, the council agreed on everything with the exception of Sunday. Mr. Ingraffia included some language in there for Sunday, and that's fine. I wanted him to do that. But I don't think that's what we agreed upon. That's still up for debate here. I don't think we settled that. I spoke to our construction official. He, his opinion and my opinion are that we should have no construction on Sundays with the exception of emergencies. That's our opinion as the enforcers of this type of stuff. But it's your decision, so I give that to you.
Okay. I want to put my residence cap on and disagree with that contention. Sunday is a day for most that are working six days a week. They can catch up on their home and to handcuff them, and I know we won't be overly policing it. I realize that. But still, if push comes to shove and it's going to go back to an ordinance, I would recommend, once again, as a resident, not the mayor, what did I say, 10 to 2, Mike, or something like that? 10 to... It shouldn't be an early hour and it shouldn't be a late hour. So I would recommend like 10 to 2, that we permit our residents only, not contractors, to work on Sundays.
Mayor, if I may, and council, when I drafted this as a draft, of course, I received that you were interested in having that concept put in. I put it in for the purposes of having it reviewed. It's up to you as a council then to really determine. But I, in fact, I just wanted to have that, if you do vote and you agree on accepting this particular aspect of the 10 to 3 Sundays just for the homeowners to do it, no one else, then it's here. If you choose not to have that in there, then I can easily just take that part out and exempt Sunday.
All right, let's poll the council. Mr. Fasolo?
I believe there shouldn't be construction on Sundays.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No construction on Sundays.
I'm just going to repeat for the audience because I know that through Councilwoman Ingui, they're having a hard time hearing other people. So for the audience, Councilman Fasolo said no construction on Sundays.
Do you want to take the poll?
Councilwoman Ingui. Wetchler, sorry.
Yes, I think the homeowner should have an opportunity to do it on Sunday from 10 to 3. Only the homeowner.
10 to 2.
No, it's just 10 to 3 here, babe.
Oh.
That's what he had. I agree with 10 to 3.
Okay, so 10 to 2 is on the table or no?
No, 10 to 3 is on the table.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Council President Ballasjery.
I think it's difficult because we don't know what kind of work and it can be very loud and, I don't know, it's a day arrest. I'm going to say no.
Councilwoman Pellegrine?
I would say yes, but I like the hours of 10 to 2, not to extend it to 3.
Councilman Goleback?
No.
Councilwoman Ingui?
I'm sorry, can you just repeat, can Lorraine repeat what she said?
Okay, so right now, we have 3 for no, 1 for 10 to 3. And Lorraine said 10 to 2 as opposed to 10 to 3.
I'm okay with the 10 to 3.
Okay, but so either way, no is the majority. To have no construction on Sundays?
3 to 3. You've got a 3 to 3 tie.
3 to 3.
Yeah. Yeah, let's not...
Yes or no, right?
Yeah. There's different times.
Oh, right.
It's just yes to whether you want it or not.
Right.
So it's a tie, so the mayor is...
The tie is...
Yeah.
Okay.
You get to vote. You vote.
I get to vote?
You get to vote.
Woo!
Will you be working so long? Yes, well...
Are you guys working together on this one? I vote 10 to 3 or 2. Whatever, 10 to 2 or 10 to 3 is fine with me.
All right. So it will be in...
10 to 2 or 10 to 3?
10 to 3 is, is that, yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying 10 to 3.
Okay.
Okay? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
It'll be only exclusive for the homeowners.
Just for the homeowners.
So it stands the way I have it drafted.
Yes. Did you have a premonition there, Sal?
No.
He's, he's...
Okay, so moving on to 4B is a police penalties ordinance in relation to fireworks. So I'll turn that over to our police chief.
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Ingraffia about this. This year was a monumental year for fireworks complaints. And it started in March or April and it continued right through July. And, you know, I get a lot of calls from residents about their pets being in distress. I could speak from, I have three dogs in my house and they were all petrified every night. It also affects veterans with PTSD. Hey, listen, on 4th of July, we anticipate it, we expect it, and we, to some degree, permit it. But there's no reason for this to be going on on other days of the year, especially to the degree it was. And we felt that we needed to add a little bit of teeth to the fine to deter this from going on. So Mr. Ingraffia was gracious enough to prepare this for us, and it is before you.
All right, I agree with, especially with the climate out there now. I agree wholeheartedly. Council? Any comments?
I agree.
If I may, Mayor, the ordinance gives it a leadway. When I think, when I prepare ordinances where there's a fine involved, I like to leave the court a little leadway to justify or be just when any fines are assessed, depending on circumstances. The prior ordinance had a set amount, minimum, max. In this ordinance, I went from a minimum to 250 to a maximum of 500.
Moving on to 4C. The ordinance is in relation to our drug-free school zone maps. We have some additional parks and schools that were not updated on our current zoning map. So our engineer worked with our traffic division to develop the new maps. With that being said, I don't know if the chief has anything to add to that.
No, it's a pretty standard thing. The document gets updated from time to time, especially if there are changes. This allows us to charge appropriately for drug offenses within school and park zones. We did add a park, the dog park, and we had some additional private schools come into the borough since the last time this was updated.
Okay, moving on to 4D. We have some capital requests for bonding, which is done on an annual basis. In front of you, you have the estimated numbers, departments, and then also some departments provided backup. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to the VA.
Thank you, yes. Also, a standard, you know, borough practice, we do capital requests. We held them off a little longer this year. We usually do them May, June. We waited till July, August this year. Just to take the, for lack of a better term, temperature of the COVID situation with money. Met with our CFO, money's available, taxes are being paid, funds are there... This allows us to charge appropriately for drug offenses within school and park zones. We did add a park, the Dog Park, and we had some additional private schools come into the borough since the last time this was updated.
Okay, moving on to 4D, we have some capital requests for bonding, which is done on an annual basis. In front of you, you have the estimated numbers, departments, and then also some departments provided backup. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to the V.A.
Thank you, yes. Also, a standard, you know, borough practice, we do capital requests, we held them off a little longer this year, we usually do them May, June, we waited till July, August this year. Just to take the, for lack of a better term, temperature of the COVID situation with money, met with our CFO, money's available, taxes are being paid, funds are there, the borough's in good shape financially, so I sent out to the department heads for their, to send in their requests, and before you, you have requests from Public Works, Fire, Police, and Building Department, and on here, it has building and grounds, it's, I believe it's more recreation, that's adding cameras to two of our parks, that we get a lot of vandalism and problematic situations in the parks, so we're adding cameras to parks. The Building Department needs an SUV, they have one, which is hard for them to get around in bad weather, and it's a 2008, and it's on its last leg. Police Department is bonding for two SUVs, and we're upgrading our body cameras, which are five years old and at the end of their lifespan, and that's obviously a very valuable piece of equipment in today's climate. Fire Department needs a new Hearst tool, which is the jaws of life, their current one is over 20 years old, and the Public Works is looking for a snowplow, bobcat, and a plate compactor, and the Public Works Superintendent sent in his justification for that. Mayor?
Yes, I'd just like to piggyback on what Mike had said, I think it's important for the public to know that we normally bond in the Capitol here, a million, a million and a half. This is at a half a million dollars, am I correct?
Yes, Mayor.
So we're far below that, knock on wood, hopefully, we're not going to get any surprises until the end of the year, and we'll be way below that number of 1.5. Ms. Delaney?
Okay, great, that's all we have for ordinances this evening. Moving on to discussions, first on the agenda is a LowSAP referendum. There is no backup, this is something that was recommended and brought to the table by our CFO, so as many of you know, we do have an established LowSAP program here in Elmwood Park, which is the Length of Service Awards Program, but we also have the STIPEN program for our volunteers, so what our CFO is recommending is that we do a referendum to eliminate the LowSAP program. He states that there is currently no volunteer that is utilizing the LowSAP program, that everyone is utilizing the STIPEN program, and then also, being that we no longer have the Volunteer Ambulance Corps, he thinks that it would be wise to, again, do away with the LowSAP program. If you do do that, it needs to be done by referendum, and I, as the clerk, would need to have that to the county to be on the ballot for November by August 25th. So we do not have much time, and how we do that is the council, if you're in agreement with the recommendation of our CFO, would have to adopt an ordinance or a resolution, of which then I would send to the county clerk. We don't necessarily have enough time to do it by ordinance, so if our Borough Attorney, again, if you're in support of his recommendation, can draft a resolution for next week, we can go about it that way, and again, it would be on the ballot for November's election for our residents to vote on.
That's to eliminate the...
Correct.
My concern with this is, I would love to get the opinion of the Fire Department, because this is going to referendum, I want to make sure that they're on board with it, even though, as you had said, currently there's nobody on the LowSAP.
That is what our CFO said to me, that everyone is utilizing the STIPEN program.
Okay. Council, I think it's wise that we at least get an opinion from the Fire Department?
No.
No?
No. The CFO said what we should do, and I think definitely we should...
I mean, if nobody's on it, and they're all using the STIPEN program...
Yeah, I don't think we should do it.
You know, okay. Sandy?
I know, I'm, I mean, they're not utilizing that, so shouldn't be any issue.
Okay. Lorraine?
I agree, I don't think there would be an issue, but out of courtesy, if you want, as the mayor, to reach out to just let them know what's going to be going on, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, and I think this way, everybody's on the same page with what's going on, I think it would be the right thing to do.
Daniel?
I disagree completely. No one's using it?
Microphone, please.
No one's using it? There's nothing to worry about. One, in this election, you have the presidential ballot all the way down to the council, plus Board of Education, plus marijuana legalization, plus a constitutional amendment about redistricting, and I think the governor's plan to borrow $10 billion potentially is on there. I'm not sure about that one, but there's at least two state questions on the ballot already. I wouldn't be shocked if this thing gets rejected, because the residents of Elmwood Park won't even know what they're voting on, so I'm not a fan of doing, just to do it, because it's not costing or hurting anyone now, and you're adding extra stuff to the ballot, which I'm not a fan of, because people have short enough attention spans as it is.
Daniel, forgive me, but the question was, should we notify the Fire Department?
That's not the question, the question is, should we do it? If the question is that we want to do it, then the question would be, should we notify the Fire Department? My opinion is, we shouldn't throw more stuff onto a complicated ballot, so the Fire Department question for me is irrelevant, because I don't think we should be entertaining it this year. Now, if we really needed to do this, I would say pick an election year where nothing's going on, like the mayor election year, you know what I mean? I'm serious, I'm dead serious. Pick an election year that has less going on, less importance, because the more stuff you throw on it, the less people are going to focus on the other questions. That's my opinion, as someone who cares about elections and stuff like that.
Okay, Denise, are you with us?
I am.
Your opinion?
I have to, I have to agree with Dan, I think we have enough going on with this year's election, and I would not really, you know, I think it won't get lost.
I'm confused.
Yeah, that's what the question was.
That's not the question, the question is whether we should notify the Fire Department and get their opinion about us eliminating the LowSAP forever, that's the question.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Why don't we start rather, sorry, Councilwoman, why don't we start first by taking a poll if we should move forward with the referendum, and then based on that, do a poll of if we should notify the Fire Department?
Yes.
Okay, so, for the referendum or not, Councilwoman Ingui, I'll start with you. You said no, correct?
I said no.
Councilman Goleback said no. Councilwoman Pellegrin?
Well, now it's a different question.
Yes.
Really, I think, to tell you the truth, I really think Roy should have came in and explained this a little bit further. That's really what I think, but I would go at this time then, not on the referendum right now.
Council President Balascherry?
You know what, I agree. I don't really know much of why we're doing this, or how, this was just brought to us, so I agree though, it's not, it's not a necessity at this moment, so I'm fine.
Councilwoman Wetchler?
I agree.
Councilman Fasolo?
No.
Okay, so that was easier. So we don't even need to get the Fire Department involved.
Aaron, we always start here.
I will start there next time. Sal?
I'm not the drop in here.
No, but I realize, I realize we voted on this already, but is this something that we have to do?
No.
Mayor, with regards to your question, whether you have to do it or not, no. You don't have to do it, but it still stays as an ordinance which exists, which can be utilized or anyone wants to. It's optioned and becomes whether they're going to take the STIPEN or go with it, and it makes really no difference.
Okay, okay, so it's status quo.
It's moot.
Status quo.
Okay, moving on, another discussion item, we had a councilperson request that at our September meeting, we have a recognition for individuals that provided services and time to the community. We also had some other recommendations, so rather than going over the names, why don't we just kind of agree that in September, we will do some form of recognition ceremony for individuals in the community, and then, you know, perhaps councilpeople could submit names and we could revisit.
Aaron, I think the first one that should get recognized, to be honest, is the Police Department. All the police officers that we have hired with this COVID, I think that they deserve to be recognized, and I think their parents and their, you know, family should be here too. Those are the ones that should be first. I have no problem with, you know, anybody else after that, but I think these officers should be...
You've got to keep in mind, though, the governor's order, where he just reduced it from 100 down to 25.
Yeah, I was going to add to the mayor, what you're saying, like, I'm definitely always in favor of recognizing everyone, but I think at this time, we have to take it month by month, because we don't know, if our numbers keep increasing, I don't think it's a great idea maybe at that time to have that many public residents in here, that many people in here, because it's not good, yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Denise.
The data, I think we were a little more open, and with his new executive orders, I think that probably we should hold off, but when I did submit that email, I think we were talking about September being a definite republic, and I think at that point, we were able to have more people in the building.
Okay, so what I will do is, I will keep this, put it aside, and as things develop further, you know, perhaps we could revisit it at a later time, but I will make a side note for myself for the future.
Yes.
Okay.
Also, Mayor, if I may, prior to anything of this sort being opened up, again, I'm in the process of preparing a reopening plan for the municipality, if that's not approved and passed, then you really can't do anything.
Okay. When do you think we'll have that?
I will, I'm working on it right now, it's pretty extensive, and I should be able to have it by the next work session, next meeting.
Okay, so just so I understand, what you're saying, by law, in order to reopen the building, we need this plan in place?
Correct.
Thank you, Sal.
Otherwise, you're opening yourself up to a lot of lawsuits.
Okay, so before I move on to departmental reports, we have an additional item for discussion, which was brought to my attention by Councilman Fasolo. I believe he handed out letters prior to the meeting that was submitted by a resident in regards to landscaping in front of their home, so with that being said, I'll turn it over to Councilman Fasolo.
Sure, we all received this in our emails, for some reason, I don't think Ms. Delaney was copied into it, so this is why I brought it today. There's a resident that built a landscaping wall in front of his grass and against, I guess, the sidewalk, and there's an issue with them being in the right of way, in case we have to enlarge in the street, but he's looking for a pass on that through the council. And I did speak to Sal, too, maybe you could elaborate more on this.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, it has been the past practice of this council to look at circumstances where there is an encroachment on a right of way, and a lot of times, and most of the times, anyone that has requested a waiver, this council had approved that waiver with an understanding that an agreement is signed by the owner of the property, where they take specific responsibility in the event that, in the future, that area has to be cleared, or that particular encroachment has to be cleared, it'll be at their expense and not the borough's expense, and they are responsible for any liability. That particular agreement is signed, endorsed, notarized, sent back to me, and would be recorded in the county in order that that agreement runs with the land, not just with the person. That means that anyone who buys that property in the future will be on notice of that agreement, where it restricts, and the responsibility is kept on by the new owner.
It's attached to the deed.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Sal. I think the moral of this story is, and a lot of folks will come up to us and ask if this is permissible without a permit, or this is, and we really don't know, I suggest to avoid situations like this, where these people are going through agony at this point, by not coming for a permit first, that was the first mistake, and if, I want to say to the public out there, if you have any doubt whatsoever, what you need a permit for, call our Building Department, and they'll advise you, and they'll save you any anguish going Ms. Delaney?
So, we'll move forward with the recommendation of...
Mayor, what I will do is, in view of the circumstances, I'll get more information, I'll get a copy of the deed, so that I will know how the recording will have to be, I'll prepare the agreement, I will forward it with the council's approval, and the mayor's approval, of course, I will forward it to the homeowner, they will, I will request that they will have it signed, notarized, sent back to me for recording, and I will then forward you copies of it.
Okay, so we'll wait for the update from you, so most likely in September, as opposed to next week's meeting, perfect. Okay.
But I'll prepare the resolution for upcoming in order to authorize that.
Okay. Moving on to departmental reports, 6A, we have the Millennium Strategies Report through June 2020, that's our municipal grant writer. 6B, we have the Municipal Court Report for July 2020. 6C, we have the Finance Report through July 31, 2020, so this is the current standing of our finances for all of our departments in front of you. And then 6D, our Library Board Meeting Minutes, we have a new library director who just learned to submit their minutes to my attention for your review, so these minutes are for February, May, and June 2020.
Guess what? It's time for council reports. Mr. Fasolo?
Yeah, just quickly, I want to thank Chris from Strangers Helping Strangers, we didn't get to make comments right after that presentation, but I have the great honor of working with him in Garfield, and I know that he's loved and respected by everybody there, and I thank him for bringing that same energy here to Elmwood Park and helping our residents and helping a lot of people around the state, so just want to extend that thank you to him.
Thank you. Mrs. Wetchler?
Yes, I'd like to thank Chris, too, I worked with him a couple times, he's alien in the ring, and what he does, and what our residents, sorry, and what our residents appreciate, you don't know, you know, the feeling is, when you're helping somebody, you know, and it's something special that he does to get all this food to give to people that don't have it, you know, and especially in this time that we're all suffering, not only one person, if it's hardship, it's family, it's being sick, you know, losing a job and everything else, and what we could do, even though it's only a little bit, he's brought so much to this town, and, you know, we can't thank him enough, we really can't.
It's...
Progress.
He's a giant, that's for sure. Council President Balascherry?
Yes, just the one thing also, I did want to have, be able to comment on the, with Chris, with the Strangers Helping Strangers, he's doing an amazing job, we're very blessed to have him here in Elmwood Park, he puts so much time in, I just don't know where he finds the time, but he also brings in volunteers, there's always, and even if it is the last minute, they're there, I mean, and that's what's amazing with our community also, you know, I had the honor to work with him, and I plan on volunteering in the future as well, but he's just an amazing person, so thank you. Thank you, Garfield, for sharing him with us. Progress.
Thank you. Mr. Goleback?
Progress.
Mrs. Ingui, are you still with us?
I am, progress, Mayor.
Okay, and Mrs. Pellegrin?
Yes, just real quick, our Junior Police Academy will start on Monday, and it'll run for a week, we have 51 children that enrolled in it, usually, we have two sessions, we have one next week for 10 to 13, and then 14 to 16 the next week, but because of the low enrollment, they're doing it all at once next week, so that's a great thing our Police Department does, it's at no charge for the students, the residents, so it's a great thing, and that will happen on Monday. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I forgot to say, I wanted to say to this council that I was reading this weekend, in Bergenfield, they actually closed a street, one of their streets, Washington Avenue, to vehicle traffic, to support local businesses and shopping, I thought that would be a good thing to do here in Elmwood Park, maybe closing Market Street for one day, just to promote small business shopping, or if a restaurant or pizzeria, whoever on Market Street, wants to utilize the street for one day. pizzeria, whoever on Market Street, wants to utilize the street for one day, providing we can do that through our police department, I think maybe that's something we should look into.
Well, I think the executive order from the governor is going to actually answer that question.
Okay, because Bergenfield did it not too long ago, like, a week ago, so that's what I'm saying, if it's feasible through the police department, maybe we can look into that.
I think it's a great idea, and it's just that I hope that we're not handcuffed.
It'll help out our businesses a lot, maybe that some businesses that haven't opened or are struggling to open, you know, get a jumpstart from that.
Mike?
Mayor, if I may, I had recommended this before, it didn't get legs, and that's fine, but if you'd like, I can reach out to some of the businesses along Market Street, in particular, the restaurants and eateries, and see if they would even be interested, and if they are, I will do whatever I have to do from a law enforcement perspective, public safety, to make it work. So I think we should start with petitioning the businesses, if they're interested, then we'll come up with a plan, and I can share that with the mayor and council for...
I agree.
Just playing devil's advocate, the restrictions right now, if we had to do this right now, can we do it?
Sure, I mean, the restriction was indoors 25, this would be outdoor.
Outdoor, okay, okay.
And I think it was from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, they closed the street in Bergenfield, just for reference.
Okay. All right, anybody else before, all right, I'd just like to say to some people out there that we understand the frustration of not being able to have this building open to the public, but we have remarkable status right now of not one case coming, of pandemic coming out of this building. I think that is, it's a great position to be in, I wouldn't want to be in others' positions, so we're taking this a little further, to make sure that that doesn't occur. As our attorney had said tonight, a plan is being derived that will allow us to conform to whatever the governor is requesting as far as opening the building. But we don't actually enjoy not talking, you know, having people in front of us, so this is something that we're dealing with, we don't like it, it's working, and just bear with us. As far as the latest storm went, I think we moved rapidly on the damaged areas, I understand we still have a few people that are out of service, bear with us, I was assured by our administrator that public service is on it, you might not see them physically, because they're working in another area in order to bring your electricity back up, but we are not letting up on it, and we are on it. Ladies and gentlemen, recently, we lost our rec. director, Donna Pagliisi, she's moving on to advance her career as a BA. I want to say that I thought the 12 years that she was here, she did a remarkable job, strong woman, strong personality, but she got the job done, and it's ironic, last night, I was at the planning board, and there was an attorney there from your town, Erin, and he said to me, he says, "Bob, I can't believe the condition of your parks," he says, "is remarkable," and he says, "You got us beat in that department." So I think that speaks volumes for what Ms. Pagliisi did. Besides the nuts and bolts of the everyday operation, we want to wish her the best in the future. And one last note, there's talk out there about defunding the police department, and police officers are bad people, and there's all kinds of craziness going on regarding that, but I want to show you an incident, and I hope he doesn't get mad at me for bringing this up, but the everyday police officer, what they go through, and then the higher ranking officers, what they go through, they become targets of people. We had our police chief, there was a crackpot who, and, Mike, can you elaborate a little on this for us? Because I need some help.
Sure, Mayor. So I received a call from my police desk two nights ago, at, just after midnight, and they were calling to inform me that they had stationed two patrol cars outside my residence, because an individual had contacted the police desk and said that he was going to shoot me in the head. They did some, you know, investigating, tracked the guy down to Wichita, Kansas, he happened to be an individual that despises law enforcement, and does this regularly, how he picked us or me, that remains to be seen, but he did. Wichita PD was very cooperative, they went to his home, they knew him well, and they knew him to be a very bad individual. He was wanted in two other states, and he was placed under arrest and incarcerated immediately for that and other warrants that he was wanted for, so nevertheless, with the great police department I have, I tucked myself back in and got a great night's sleep.
It's funny, but it's not funny. Now, just picture this, you go home, you open your door, your day's work is over with, and you go sit on the couch, you have your dinner, you're relaxing, and then you get a call like that, that somebody wants to shoot you. That's what these police officers go through. They certainly don't get paid enough, but don't be asking for no raise, Mike. Generally speaking, and I think I know the feelings of this council in reference to that, and how we support the blue, am I right?
Correct.
Right?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So that's all I have, and I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Ms. Delaney.
Okay, Mayor, at this time, we can open up for our second public hearing, if we could have a motion?
Motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
At this time, I'm going to unmute the public's lines, for anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address for public record, and for those listening in the audience, please try to minimize any background noise.
All participants are muted. All participants are unmuted.
Would anyone from the public like to speak at this time?
Jean Freitag, 35 Hillman Drive.
Yes, Jeanie?
I just have a few questions, good evening, all. I can assure you that I am not deaf, I did hear some of what was said tonight, but I do need clarification on a couple of things that I was unable to hear. I will report that there were some people that I heard clearly, there were some that it was minimal at best. I don't know whether people are not speaking into the microphone, but I can't judge because I'm not there. However, I would like clarification on just a couple of issues, please. The ordinance prohibited noises, now, there's something, which day was it you said it'll be 10 to 3, the time?
Sunday.
Oh, you will allow it on Sunday now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure about that one.
Yes.
The one that was added, 5C, the landscaping, and then I heard the word permits in there, what was that about?
What's the question? I'm sorry.
A discussion item, 5C that was added. Landscaping, I heard that word, and then I heard permits. Mr. Fasolo had brought it up?
Yes. Do you want me to...
Yeah, please, please.
So there was a letter submitted, Ms. Freitag, from a resident that has landscaping in front of their home, and basically, they wish to expand upon that landscaping, but it's technically not on their property. So as in the past, I'm not sure if you remember, I want to say about a year and a half ago, a woman came in in regards to her retaining wall, and what we had to do is, an agreement between the borough and the homeowner, that basically, moving forward, the responsibility of that property would become the responsibility of the owner, whether they move or not, it basically essentially becomes part of their deed, and it's something that our borough attorney would draft up, both parties would sign, and it would be filed in the county's office. So this resident was asking to do that, so that they can expand upon their landscaping at their home.
Okay, the original case you're talking about, that was because of an easement regarding a telephone pole, correct?
Yes, but it would be a similar agreement of that type.
Okay, I understand. Now, another item I have, it was not discussed tonight, but it's something that I've noticed. On the side of Route 80, and between Molnar Drive and Linden, there was, initially, they were doing a lot of work and cutting down a lot of stuff, it looked great. I don't know if anybody's been bothered lately, or what the plans are, there's fencing missing, and it's an all-around mess, it looks worse than it did before. Are there any plans for them to come back and fix this?
Mr. Feligno?
Because they've left it a shambles.
Mr. Feligno?
Yes, Mrs. Freitag, I've been in touch with the DOT, who controls that project, they told me, at best, early fall, early to mid-fall, they would come back and resume operations there.
The fence is just lying there, I would hate for somebody to be admitting sections, and then there's somewhere just full of all roads, I would hate for anybody to get hurt over there.
They've been put on notice of that exact fact, that the fence is missing and dangerous, it is their property, it is their responsibility, they've been put on notice, they're aware of it, and they are content with coming back in the fall.
Well, I hope and pray that it's never, not too late. Okay, thank you, all, have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else care to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion, motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Del... What's she, oh, Denise, you sounded like a little mouse there.
Okay, at this time, if we could have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
Where is the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and where is this public body's of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and where is the governing body, which is to discuss personnel matters and litigation legal reports? Minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the public be excluded from this meeting.